Good evening. My name is Jeff Hull. I'm the Assistant Town Manager and Chairman of the Cable TV Advisory Task Force. It being a little after seven o'clock, I would like to open this cable ascertainment hearing. First, let me start by noting that the notice of this public hearing has been duly posted by the town clerk and has appeared as a legal notice in the Town Crier on November 16th, 2005, and November 23rd, 2005. The legal notice reads as follows. "A public hearing will be held on Monday, December 5, 2005, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium at the Town Hall, 121 Glen Road, Wilmington, Mass., concerning Comcast and the possible renewal of its cable television license due to expire on March 24th, 2007. Members of the public are encouraged to testify at this hearing concerning the performance of Comcast under its current license, future cable-related needs, and interests of the community. This hearing is held pursuant to federal law 47-USC-546 and state regulation 207-CMR-2.02 and 3.05. Public records pertaining to the renewal are available for inspection and copying at the Town Hall. For additional information, contact Jeffrey M. Hull, Assistant Town Manager, at (978) 658-3311, or email him at jhull@town.wilmington.us." Signed, Raymond N. Lepore, Chairman, Board of Selectmen. At this point, I would also note that there have been articles concerning this meeting and the subject that we'll be talking about that have appeared in the local press. And with that, I will introduce or have the members of the cable task force introduce themselves. If we could start on my left.
Please, Leland from Wilmington School's Department, Technology Coordinator.
Donna Gasek, Executive Director of WCTV.
I am Quincy Vale, resident of the town of Wilmington.
I'm Wayne Aruda. I'm a resident of the town.
I would also like to acknowledge Jane Lyman, who is here in the audience this evening. She is Manager of Government and Community Relations from Comcast, and I wish to thank her for providing for the stenographer this evening. The purpose of this meeting, as noted in the legal notice, is to receive input from Wilmington residents and subscribers, any public officials concerning the past performance of Comcast relative to providing cable service, and concerning the desires of Wilmington residents and cable subscribers with respect to cable service. I want to emphasize that we are here to receive comments only on Comcast's provision of cable service and not comments with respect to their Internet or telephone service. Those are separate types of service that are outside of the purview of our relicensing process. This hearing is intended to be a discussion, or not to be a discussion or debate, but simply an opportunity to provide comment. If people have questions about cable service, Comcast policies, or other issues related to cable service, I would encourage you to pose those questions this evening. It's probably likely that we will not be able to provide a response this evening, but Ms. Lyman may be able to provide some follow-up response to you. This public hearing is being recorded via stenographic recording and is being also recorded by WCTV for future broadcast and live. Individuals offering comments are asked to speak clearly and loudly so that the stenographer can produce an accurate record of your comments. Since this hearing is for informational gathering purposes only, speakers are also asked to identify yourselves, to provide current residential address or affiliation with the town, and to approach the microphone in the middle of the auditorium. There is a sign-up sheet at the back of the room. I would ask that people coming in this evening, please sign in so that we have a record of your attendance. I propose, in addition, that at the conclusion of this meeting, that the task force vote to authorize the proceedings to remain open for the purpose of receiving written comments until the close of business on Monday, December 19th, 2005. If the task force is in agreement, anyone wishing to have to offer written comments must submit them prior to the deadline to the attention of Raymond Lepore, Chairman, Wilmington Board of Selectmen, Town of Wilmington, 121 Glen Road, Wilmington, Mass., 01887, or you may email comments to my attention. The hearing itself will run as follows. First, I'll provide a brief overview of the relicensing process. Then, task force members will pose a series of questions, or a number of different questions. And these are just designed to try to generate some comments from you so that we are able to take your comments and use them in the ascertainment process and ultimately in the negotiations that we will get into with Comcast. We will also provide an opportunity for general comments. If you have specific comments that are outside of the questions that we posed, we encourage you to offer those as well. Then I will read written comments into the record from individuals that have provided either emails or letters with respect to the relicensing process. In addition to that, I will read into the record a petition for a senior discount which has been provided as well. Following that, we will adjourn this portion of the meeting and, as I say, keep the comment period open through the 19th. Just by way of an overview of the cable license renewal process, the license renewal process is prescribed by federal law. Customarily, the cable provider usually notifies the community of its intentions to begin the relicensing renewal process, and that usually happens between 30 and 36 months from the date of license expiration. Comcast has done that. They've expressed an interest in going through the relicensing process. In this case, the issuing authority is the Board of Selectmen, and the board ultimately has the final say, at least on the town's behalf, with respect to the terms and conditions of a new license. The Board of Selectmen appointed this Cable TV Advisory Task Force essentially to function as its agent with respect to conducting the ascertainment process, negotiations, and to present a draft license for their review and consideration. The ascertainment process, which is what we are currently engaged in, is really an information gathering process where we attempt to identify people's views on Comcast's performance and also their views on what you would like to see going forward. The task force expects to have one additional public hearing, probably towards the close of the ascertainment process, where we will provide the community with some information about where we see this process going and some of the things that we would be putting forward in the form of an RFP or a Request for Proposal. We've already noted the types of, the reasons for the ascertainment process. It also should be noted that the cable license is a non-exclusive license, meaning that other providers may approach the Board of Selectmen about offering cable service. At this point, before we begin posing some specific questions for you, I'd like to give Donna Gasek, who is the Executive Director of WCTV, an opportunity to provide a few comments about WCTV. Donna?
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. WCTV was created in 1987 by a voluntary Board of Directors to serve the communication needs of the residents, educational institutions, the local government, and nonprofits in Wilmington. This board helped to design the first facility at the Swain School and to hire the first staff. In 1989, WCTV opened its doors as a community access center, offering training and resources to the Wilmington community, a place where public, educational, and governmental access can work to support the goals of individuals and local institutions. WCTV is recognized by the IRS as a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, and it fulfills its mission by providing members with access to and training on video production and editing equipment, and channel time on the local cable system. WCTV provides training and resources to make use of this important communications medium, increases access to educational, cultural, political, municipal, and human resources within the town, strengthens the ability of all organizations to serve the residents of the community by providing a medium through which they can share their resources with the community, provides local television programs and opportunities not available through other mass communication venues in Wilmington. WCTV has served the community for 18 years. Since it was first formed, it has now grown to three full-time and one part-time staff person. We offer residents the ability to take training and classes on learning to use television and video equipment, and we operate three channels: public access, available to all residents, educational, and government channels. The membership has grown to more than 350 Wilmington residents and organizations, and programming is produced on our three local channels. In the past five years, staff members and volunteers have produced 58,507 hours of programming. WCTV is now an integral part of the Wilmington community. It is a vital resource to the town's electronic information to residents. The community bulletin board is used by hundreds of residents and organizations in town. Last year, we displayed a record 1,052 announcements. Information was provided to residents, including school events and PAC meetings, town meetings, special events in town, nonprofit organization events and fundraisers, classes and workshops, art classes, health and social services, and other town department information. Our programming reflects the unique and diverse residents of Wilmington. We have, our programs have included coverage of Board of Selectmen meetings, school committee meetings, and other town meetings, political debates between candidates, local town events such as the 275th Parade, the Fourth of July Celebration, good guy events, and Concerts on the Common, local high school football games and other sports, annual high school, middle school, and elementary school events, band performances, musicals, plays, corral events, weekly coverage of church services, cultural and literacy programs at the Library and Arts Council, programs produced by neighborhood teenagers and middle school students such as Hey Listen Up and Fast Forward, fundraising events such as the annual rotary auction and the American Red Cross fundraiser for the victims of Hurricane Katrina, fire safety programs such as Safety for All Seasons, public safety programs such as Operation Safe Prom, and programs such as Where's Wilmington that profile local people who live or work in town. We provide health information and screening events, recreation events for children, adults, and senior citizens, distance learning for students and homebound students, cultural arts programs such as the Classic Arts Showcase. Residents have come to rely on local access television and their channels to share local information. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 assures that local governments have a right to manage their public rights of way and to require fair and reasonable compensation for those rights of way. By including provisions for public access in the cable license, the Wilmington public is assured that they will continue to have access to these rights of way. It is important for public access and the cable companies to work together to develop a plan to bring a local component to the many changing technologies to all Wilmington residents. With a local public access center, there is a contract with the town that is more than a primary service. It is a beneficial situation for both the town and the cable company. A successful contract develops better communication within the community and ultimately builds a cable subscriber base. Television will continue to change and evolve as new digital technology is developed. Although we cannot predict how technology will develop, we do know we will need to use this technology to communicate. The local access television center is the ideal resource in your town to do this. Within the next few years, WCTV looks forward to relocating to a new location that will provide adequate space for its community's needs. We are optimistic to provide more space in another facility to provide a studio, digital editing rooms, a media lab, and a conference room to offer classes in technology to the community. As the technology within the cable industry changes, WCTV will upgrade to digital technology and phase out old equipment and offer the latest technology to its community. We must plan for and change with the times so the residents of Wilmington will benefit from this new technology. When you hear the comments from our members and read the letters from the Wilmington residents, you will hear how beneficial and how important WCTV is to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. At this point, what we would like to do is, each of the members of the task force essentially pose some different questions that hopefully we will receive some responses to, to assist Donna, would you like to start?
Yes. I would invite anyone to come up and comment about whether they have participated in a program sponsored by WCTV, and if they would comment on their, describe their reactions and impressions of their experience.
My name is Tom Pizera. I live at 447 Middle 6th Avenue in Wilmington. It's really strange. I talk a lot, but I'm a bit nervous this evening. I think I'm an original member of WCTV, going back to 1989, off and on, more on lately. And I have, I remember when we started with nothing but analog equipment, and editing was a tedious, tedious process. Since then, we've evolved to basically all digital equipment. We have Apple, Apple computers and PCs with very high-end editing software. Example, this was the town's 275th birthday. We had a 275th birthday parade, which was videoed and edited at the studio. And if you could see this, the results of this, you'd be amazed. It looks like it was done in Hollywood. We also had a, an ambitious road race in town this year. We had, we got awful tired of these little 5K races, so we decided to put on a half-marathon, which is 13.1 miles. Two of our volunteers from the station, I was the director of the road race, so I wasn't aware of how much videotaping was going on. Two of our members videoed this race, and we put together a beautiful DVD. Our Assistant Town Manager was in that race, and I believe he has a copy of it so he can attest to the fact of how beautiful that came out. But the point I'm trying to make is, we've evolved tremendously from the time this thing started, and it's a great, it's a great thing to have in our community. I'm retired now, as Donna can attest to. I'm at, I'm at WCTV more than I'm at home. I use it as my secondary phone number. But anyway, I'm retired. I'm having a real wonderful time participating in everything that this station offers. We've come a long way, and we've got a, and we can go a lot further. This community has really used the assets that were provided to them with this situation, with the Comcast and the people before them. And I think we should keep growing and address all the needs as an individual community. If other communities would look at what we do, they may want to do the exact same thing. I guess that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to comment?
My name is Richard Grinder. I live at 451 Middle 6th Avenue, just down the block from that other retired old guy, Tom Pizera. I've had a wonderful time there in the years I've been retired, making videos. Tom is really up to date on all the digital technology and waving his arms and making the icons jump up and down. I'm still kind of behind the times, I'm sure. But what I've enjoyed is that as the year has gone along, I've been able to produce things such as the Fourth of July, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, as the different things come up, and maybe some stuff with the Scouts, and certainly the church services. So I've gotten a lot of good use out of it. The other thing I'd like to say is, my understanding is that when the system was established, that this concept of PEG, Public Access Education, and Government, was more or less the universal standard. I don't know how many of the 351 towns in Massachusetts have this. Wilmington is perhaps very unfortunate, but I wish that more people would make use of this. It is definitely a community capability and a community access. As community access, it's definitely an asset, and access and asset certainly go together, even when I get them confused. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Walter Callings. I live at 43 Meadow Road here in beautiful Wilmington. I have a prepared text. "With hundreds of cable channels available to subscribers, local cable access channels can get lost in the shuffle. But you'll never see your child singing in a local school concert on HGTV, nor will you see full coverage of Wilmington's many local events such as parades, marathon races, or our Fourth of July activities that are the envy of other towns in the area on Lifetime Network. And it's for certain, you'll never be able to view live that heated debate between two selectmen on CNN. No, these types of programs come to you right now as part of your cable package and are made possible by the dedicated professional staff of WCTV and a host of dedicated volunteers, all working together to keep local viewers informed and entertained. WCTV offers a yearly membership, which, for the cost of a couple of Happy Meals, allows members to take informative classes in everything from basic camcorder use to film production. WCTV's youth outreach programs get local children interested in media and the arts and sparks creativity in them. WCTV even has a scholarship available for high school seniors who reside in Wilmington and are entering a college with a goal of communications and the media arts. But it's not just the youth that benefit from local cable access station WCTV. Events at the senior center are covered, often filmed, edited, and produced by senior members of WCTV. I joined WCTV years ago along with my son, who at the time was a freshman at Wilmington High School. He is now in college, but I'm proud to say is still active at the station, occasionally volunteering for filming events for Wilmington schoolteachers. For me, local cable access has given me an outlet for my own creativity and the ability to entertain and inform the visually impaired with my program, The Town Crier Audio News. Family commitments involving my elderly mother have forced me to take a break from programming, but in time, I hope to resume the show and the fun that I've had doing it. In closing, I would like to point out the WCTV slogan, Keeping You in Touch with Your Community. That is what local cable access is all about, bringing residents local events and programming available on no other station in the channel lineup, including New England Cable News." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Holly Blaco, and I'm from Salem, New Hampshire, but I have some youth here who are all Wilmington residents. I'm the Youth Outreach Coordinator at WCTV, and the students I have with me have been members and work in the programs that we run through the Youth Outreach Program. So far this year, we've created a Halloween special, individual talk shows, a remake of the Iron Chef program, and they put their own creative twist on that, and they did some public service announcements for tonight's event, and that's just in the last month with the Video Explorers program. I've been the Youth Outreach Coordinator here since January of this year, and by the end of the summer, I'd worked with the youth for approximately 80 hours and with over 30 different students. I not only worked with the students from Video Explorers, but held two week-long programs during the school year, the summer program and a youth night, where the students were on television live for two hours. We've accomplished so much with the students, and the program just keeps growing larger. So I have a couple kids here who want to say some things about the program. Who wants to go first?
Hello. My name's Jackie Carbone. I'm a resident, well, I live in Wilmington. I've learned a lot from WCTV, such as things like how to use camera equipment and how to express my creativity.
I'm Sarah Calcimmo, and I also live in Wilmington. In the WCTV, I have learned how to use camera equipment and to show different types of emotions through acting, and this has been a great experience for me.
I'm Frank Stevens. I'm a resident of Wilmington. I've worked with WCTV for what I know for the last five years. I've had a great time doing it. It's been fun. I mean, it gives me something to do, really, because I'm a really lazy person, but it gets me some, it gets me out of the house. But I enjoy, it's good to know that you're on TV and that people will recognize you and that, you know, you're doing something for the community, as little or as much as you're doing with that channel or the station or something like that. It's, well, it's also good that, for the shows that I work on, like Hey Listen Up and Once, Fast Forward, that it's not a really scripted show. It's good to know that you get your own ideas out there. You can use what your imagination wants, and you can come up with your own ideas. They may tell you it's a bad idea, or they may not be appropriate for TV every once in a while, but at least they're giving you the chance to use your imagination to come up with an idea. I've done many things, including talking about video games, and I've played my guitar on the TV, and I've done many things, and it's good to know that they've let me do that. Instead of just coming with the script and telling me to do one thing and saying, "You have to do this," it's just good to know that I get to do what I want. And it's also good to meet new people in Wilmington who also care about being on TV and doing something for the community. And I can't tell you how much in school I've been told, "I saw you on TV that day." They don't really explain much about it, but it's good to know that people are actually seeing me and say, "You were pretty good. You were talking about so-and-so." It's been fun for the last five years. I'm planning on doing it for another five years, hopefully, if I'm still in Wilmington at the time, because in five years, I'll be in college, hopefully. And thank you for listening.
I'm Joe Fitzgerald. I'm also a resident of Wilmington. I think WCTV is good for me for when I grow up, because I'm thinking of getting a job from, with TV, because that's what I'm doing now. And that's about it. And that's about it.
Good evening. My name is Chris Neville. I live at 8 Great Neck Drive, and I'm very proud to say that I'm a member of the Board of Directors from Wilmington Community Television, and in my capacity, you know, we've worked very tirelessly over the last couple of years, not only to be starting to look for a new home, but also to help with some of the programming that's been going on over there now for quite a few years. I, unlike many other people, don't happen to be the first one in my family that was involved in community television. My youngest son, my oldest son, Sean, originally became a producer at WCTV about ten or eleven years ago, when he was still in grade school, and he had the opportunity to do both baseball and basketball games in the local school system. After that, I had the opportunity to produce a television program of my own. Once he got involved in TV, I did Behind the Badge in Wilmington, which was a local cable access television program that I had a lot of fun doing. Unfortunately, like some of my counterparts in the Board of Directors, we get very busy over a period of time. We don't always have time to do the things that we'd like to be able to do. One thing I remember reading not too long ago, maybe two or three months ago, the town of Tuxbury had some controversy about the fact that they don't make full access, the full use of their cable television programming in Tuxbury. I don't think they have the opportunity to view the selectmen's meetings or the cable TV task force meetings that everybody might be watching at home right now. I know they don't watch the Redding Light Commissioners' meetings. They don't get an opportunity to watch the senior citizens' meetings that are held up at the Bizel Center. They don't have an opportunity to watch town meetings. They don't have an opportunity to watch many of the meetings that we take for granted here in Wilmington. I know that I've been very pleased over the years to videotape my children in band concerts. I know Wilmington Community Television regularly televises football games for the Wildcats on Friday nights. I know they routinely televise basketball games that your children are involved in all the time, and most of this programming is being done by volunteers, but with the exception of the staff that keeps the station running, this is almost a totally community-sponsored entity. So with that in mind, I know we've already heard people like Tom talk about the great pride he's had, the outlet that he's had in his retirement to take place, you know, participate in programming. Dick Grinder weekly tapes the services at the Congregational Church, the Methodist Church gets weekly coverage, St. Thomas's Catholic Church, the Baptist Church. All of this outreach is going into the community free of, well, basically free of charge. Of course, we all pay in our cable rates, and we recognize and understand that, but it's a great asset for the town, and I hope people recognize that when they get their next cable bill in, because if you lived in another community, chances are you'd be paying the same fee without the same benefits that you get here in Wilmington. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Fran, Act 205 Salem Street, Wilmington, Mass. I just would like to speak in support of WCTV. I'm not a member. I don't know how to run all this hair equipment or whatever, but like many, many people that do live in the town of Wilmington, we rely on WCTV for some of the important meetings and I know for sports, et cetera. I think I've watched just about everything on WCTV when I have the time, naturally, but I can tell you right now, everyone that I know enjoys it. And we do, you know, I really do want to speak in support of WCTV. Thank you.
Good evening. Scott Corant, 54 Lowell Street. I am chairman of the Fourth of July Committee, and I appreciate your comments. I'm also vice president of the Community Fund, and until about twenty-four hours ago, I was vice president of Wilmington Youth Soccer. I'm not here as a designated of any particular group. I am here as one of volunteers in the community to express my support for WCTV and the resource that it serves as in the community. It's invaluable to us and these organizations to be able to get our message out to people, especially in a community which only has a weekly newspaper. This is a resource that we need, not only to promote our events, but also to garner support, gain new members, and to share our events after the fact with the community. So I wholeheartedly support their continued support from you folks. Thank you.
Good evening. Janet Allison, Cunningham Street, Wilmington. I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Wilmington Community Fund, and for some of you seated there at the table this evening, I'm not sure that you're aware of what we do, but one of the things we do is we have a food commissary, and we share the building with, at the Swain School. And the community television station has been wonderful to us. I would echo what Scott has just said. They provide us with all kinds of bulletins on TV. They sponsor at least two programs a year where, at Valentine's Day and also around Christmas time, they do public announcements and public meetings, and they ask people to bring in food donations, which we're able to use to sponsor and work with our food commissary. So I speak on behalf of the Board of Directors for the Community Fund. We're most appreciative for what they do. It's very convenient for us, as I said, because we share the building, but they do a tremendous amount for the community. As a resident, I also enjoy opportunities to catch up on things. Sometimes if I can't see something in person, you get a chance to see it afterwards, so thank you.
Hello. I'm Sandra Curtin, 293 Salem Street. I'm actually one of the founding members of WCTV. I wasn't there in 1987, but I joined in 1988, and knew nothing about any of this equipment, somebody said, and learned it all at the studio, became a producer, produced several different series that stayed on for quite a few years. And I learned it all at the studio. I learned it all for a minimal fee, have had a wonderful time, made wonderful friendships, and learned more about the community, because once you've done a few little things that you have in your mind, then you start to reach out and say, "Well, okay, so I'll volunteer to videotape the masses, the church. Yeah, there's something coming up. We'll be there, because everybody wants to see it. We don't want anybody to miss out on this. So we'll bring our cameras down there, and we'll do the good guys, or we'll do the parade, or we'll do whatever events are in town. We'll do the graduation, the high school graduation. We'll do the high school promenade. We'll do the fashion show at the high school." And eventually, you get more and more involved in the town, and you see what's going on in the town, and you know now you have the capability, you know how to work the equipment, so you think, "Well, it would be a shame if I didn't videotape this and bring it to the town and let the town share in the activities that they cannot go to or that they can go to and revisit." So I guess I'm obviously in support of WCTV. I've been on the board, I've been off the board, I'm back on the board again, so it's covered quite a few years for me. And I guess I'd also like to make a pitch for coming down to WCTV. I knew nothing about anything. I just knew it sounded interesting, and have been a producer now for many years, and have developed some programs totally on my own. I met somebody whose sister had a heart transplant and did a whole program on her, and you just see things around you and you say, "Gotta do it." So that's, I guess, what I'd like to say is, I support WCTV, obviously, but I welcome anybody to come down to the station, and if you have the feeling that you gotta do it, gotta show it, come on down.
Sure.
How do you do? I'm Larry Dusad. I live at 432 Middlesex Avenue, north Wilmington. And I'm very impressed with everything I heard tonight, and very impressed with everything being done on TV and the team that's been doing it. I do have some, especially that parade, I think that parade was covered very nicely. I do have a couple of small complaints. Maybe I can have somebody help me out. I can go from Channel Seven, or Channel Ten, or Eleven, just about able to hear it. So I turn my volume up. Then I switch over to Nine, I mean, I switch over to Seven, knock me out of the house. Is there such a thing as automatic volume control in your system? It bothers me. I think this is where I can get this question answered. Yes?
It's been installed. It's been installed.
Great. You can see what I mean then. Another small, small matter is the dates that are published. Many of them have already gone by. Other words, is that kept up to date? If I go turn on the station now, I'd say something's happened in the back of October the fourth. It's gone by. Okay?
I think those are certainly comments that we can note and perhaps, John, I can follow on.
Yes, I couldn't think of a better place to answer the question. I watch a great deal, yes. Is there another channel on television? Yeah, no, they do a great job. Thank you.
Well, some of the other, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Jim Durkey from 506 Salem Street. A couple of comments just on, in general, on cable television, and that is that I had no problems with the previous providers of cable television. I've had no problems with Comcast. Maybe in the years that we've had it, I probably have had five interruptions in service that were very brief, minutes, in fact. However, we would not have gotten cable television at all had it not been for the fact that WCTV was producing programs. We were doing just fine with an antenna, which I had to move around a bit. The cable television is much nicer for me, but to be perfectly honest, we would not have done it without the fact that WCTV was going to be producing. We've been very happy with that, and I have helped a little bit once on a few occasions to produce a few programs, but in general, I just think that Wilmington is very lucky, exceptionally lucky, to have a community access station or stations that produce good programs consistently.
I'm Joe Fitzgerald. I go to the middle school, and I bet that nobody in this room has ever thought of, one day, "I'm just gonna go to Hollywood." Well, at WCTV, you can just like go on any show, you can like do any show you want, and like you don't have to go all the way to Hollywood. You can just go down the street and just make a show that any show you want.
Thank you. Members want to ask any other questions or, Wayne? Oh, later. Well, let me just throw out another question here. We'll jump around a little bit. We would be interested in any comments that people might offer with respect to the customer service experience that you've had with Comcast. For example, has the experience, how would you characterize the experience that you've had when you call? Is the call answered promptly, within a few rings? In terms of hold time, are you put on hold for a lengthy period of time, or are you, again, do you find that you're responded too promptly? Any comments with respect to customer service? Yes?
My comments?
Could you?
Walter Callings, 54 Meadow Road, Wilmington. My experience with customer service at Comcast has always been pleasant. They're conveniently located on Lowell Street, and you can go down there if you have a problem with a cable box, you can bring it down there and they'll switch it over for you. Comcast also has now that you can pay your bill over the phone, which I find extremely convenient, and they just, they seem to be pretty well taking care of their customers, at least from my experience.
Other comments?
Fred Daisy, Glendale Circle, Wilmington. Recently, I was experiencing some difficulties with my TV reception, so I decided to give Comcast a call. After waiting an hour, I hung up. You know, I, it was probably that they were updating the systems and so forth. I understood that, but I also had another technical question, so I was a little disturbed to find that waiting an hour didn't, you know, answer the phone. I suspect that, and I can't prove this because I didn't wait, but I suspect that because they were updating the systems, they didn't want to spend a lot of time talking to people only to tell them that the systems were being updated. My screen had frozen on about half of the television stations, and since then, I've found that often I will see pixelization of television programs, especially when action scenes come on, something that, you know, six months ago I never used to see. So this is a more recent development. I realize they've been updating the system, but it's been getting worse over time rather than better. And I also find that they, that Comcast charges a very aggressive fee, as far as I'm concerned, for their service, and to receive this type of service with that understanding, I'm having a little trouble dealing with that. So I just figured I'd voice my concerns and let you consider that.
Just a fall, just a question for you, if I might. When you mentioned something getting worse over the last six months, are you talking about the picture quality?
The picture, I'll be watching a program, it'll be just fine, and then all of a sudden, it'll sort of freeze up, or it will completely freeze up, and you may find big squares of color on the screen for maybe a moment, for maybe a minute, you know? It varies from occasion to occasion. When I'm watching a program that has an action scene and people move quickly, all of a sudden you'll, it'll like give you a still shot for a moment, and it'll sort of go out of focus, but not out of focus in the way an analog camera would, but more due to a digital signal. And I'm not on digital cable. I'm still on the analog service, you know, the standard service. So I don't think it's in my TV. It must be somewhere in the system, and it's probably Comcast moving over to the digital service, which I can appreciate, and I'm sure it saves a lot of money and allows them to offer new features and services, but it does, it has had an adverse effect on the viewing quality that I've seen.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So you've called them just one time and weren't able to get through, or have you called more than once?
Um, I've called them a couple of times. Um, I've called them a couple of times, uh, for different things. On this particular occasion, I just tried the once. It was before I was going to bed, and I stayed up an extra hour just to, you know, call and, you know, ask them about the pixelization, the freezing of the screen, and also the fact that half the stations had frozen one evening for, I had waited an hour before calling, so it had frozen for two hours before I, um, decided to go to bed that evening. I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Have you called them more than one time?
Um, on other occasions, they've generally been helpful. I also have internet service, which this meeting really isn't about, but they have been as helpful as they've been able to be on those occasions there also. So there, I generally found I haven't been able to get ahold of anyone in less than five minutes. My average time to reaching someone is between five minutes and ten minutes.
When was the last time you called? Just trying to nail down how recent this was.
Um, I didn't make a note of the occasion, but it was, it was the long wait, uh, and that was about two months ago. Give or take, uh, three weeks.
Are you still having this, uh, problem with the picture?
Um, the stations that had frozen up on that occasion were fine the next morning, but as of today, I've seen, you know, momentarily freezes on the screen and, you know, blotches of color.
Okay.
These are multiple TVs in the home.
I think it's important to, uh, to give this feedback to Comcast so they can follow up on it.
Thank you. Other, uh, comments about customer service experiences?
Okay. This is the same guy, four eighty-two, Middlesex Avenue, North Wilmington. By the way, I'd appreciate it if you'd take your words and publish them if you could. I thought they were wonderful. Very good description. Another thing, I also like the new program you have on Channel Ten on the arts. Excellent. These are only constructed for the, go back to your question again. Yes, I will not go into that office, Comcast. They lack professionalism, whoever's behind that, that glass. Sorry, but maybe something can be done about it someday. Not happy with it.
Uh, could you...
I don't pay my bills by going to that office. I will not go into that office. That's all.
Would you mind just describing what the experience was that caused, uh...
Professionalism. I don't, I can't tell you what it is, but they just say, "What are you doing here?" attitude. I don't know what it is. I can't describe it. I don't go in there anymore. Maybe it's improved.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any chance of getting that published? It would be nice, very good.
Uh, could you...
Salem Street. I'm probably not a good one to comment on service because I've only called them once. At that time, it took all of, I'd say, seven seconds to answer my call, and it took him another, you know, maybe seven or eight seconds to answer what my question was, and I was all set. As far as going into the office, I've been paying my bill there ever since they opened their office down there at Square One, and, uh, I personally have had no problem whatsoever.
Newspaper article that says Comcast plans six percent rate hike. And in it, it explains that the expanded basic tier, which I have, and seventy-five to eighty channels, and they say it's gonna go up from the present forty-five dollars, you know, to, and that were increased by about two dollars and seventy cents. That seems to be a very low price. I pay over sixty dollars for the basic, and I'm sure that everyone else in Wilmington does too. And, you know, so I'm bothered by that published statement in the, in the Boston Globe that the basic, the standard basic is forty-five dollars.
If I could just interject for a minute, and perhaps Jane may want to comment on this, but she did indicate to me prior to the...
I did not comment.
Oh, sure, I just wanted to, for your information, uh, Jane Lyman indicated to me prior to our meeting tonight, she referenced this particular article in the Globe, and as she described it to me, that article is not accurate, that there has not been any, uh, I guess, published, um, announcement from Comcast about a rate increase. Is that accurate, Jane?
Okay, so ju- just as an FYI, I mean...
Okay, so the forty-five dollars is not true.
I haven't seen the article, but my understanding is...
I will give it to you. On another question, there's, uh, four channels that I don't watch, they are second language channels, and, uh, I have no use for them. I, I'm not a second language person, and, but they're, they're prime channels, and I was wondering, could they be substituted for something else, like TCM, Turner, Turner Music, Turner Classic, which, which I don't receive, and, uh, but it gets great publicity of the great shows that are on there, and I, I just think that maybe get rid of the four channels that I have absolutely no use for, and, and there's probably about eight other channels that, that I don't watch, but I don't get the Turner Classic movies, and I, and I would like to get that. Another comment, uh, à la carte is, and I guess the director of cable television is suggesting that, uh, à la carte be made available to the people. In other words, just take the, take the channels that you want and pay for. Comcast position, I guess, is it'd be too expensive, but the chairman says, no, in the long run, it'll be cheaper. I was wondering if you could consider à la carte for Wilmington. See, I got one more comment I'd like to make. I guess on the elderly, could they get a break? I, I've seen that discussed in the paper, and, uh, and, and low income families also, could they get a break? You know, and, uh, because, again, if I, if I'm paying six, over sixty dollars for the expanded tier, then, uh, and they're quoting forty-five, I, I think that forty-five's a hard number, right? Those are a couple, a couple of things, those are things I'd like to, uh, the board to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Fran.
In a comment. Brandak, Salem Street, Wilmington, Mass. I understand that, um, you did comment that you were gonna read, um, the petition for a discount for the senior citizens into the record.
Yes.
And that's gonna be at the end of the night?
Yes, it'll be following this comment.
Okay, all right. Mike, what I would like to comment on is the advisory committee negotiating this with cable TV. You know, it's all well and good to read it into the record, but the advisory committee, if you're doing the negotiations, I would expect you to negotiate this with the, uh, with cable TV. That's what I'm asking you, and I believe I asked that question before, too. You have to remember that there's over ninety cities and towns in the state of Massachusetts that already have a senior citizen discount, if not more. So that's what I'm asking you. Are you eventually going to negotiate this with cable TV, not just read it into the record?
Uh, we'll certainly consider that as, as we've considered all the other comments, and as a board, we'll have to decide how to approach that. Quite honestly, uh, it's a very, um, sensitive issue because, uh, the statute that we, that cable operates under, um, as you know, does not allow the local, uh, community to, uh, to dictate price.
Exactly.
There is no, there is no provision in the law for us to, um, bargain over, um, prices in, in the license. So it's something that, as you say, other communities have in their agreements. My understanding is that many of those communities have had those, um, senior discounts historically, although clearly some communities have, uh, at least obtained side letters more recently where, um, Comcast, I guess, has provided some measure of agreement, so to speak, uh, for senior discounts, but, but certainly something that we will look at as, as, as the process goes forward.
I really would appreciate that. I would expect you to negotiate the terms. And another comment, uh, I want Mr. O'Reilly, said there are many, many citizens in the town of Wilmington that do have cable TV, and as you well know, I got over three hundred signatures, uh, from these here residents for the senior citizens. And, um, quite a few of them did say they have, uh, four or five channels that they don't even watch, and quite frankly, some of them would enjoy the History Channel, Turner Classics, or whatever, they didn't mention Turner Classics and the History Channel. So, you know, I have to agree with him that where there are so many stations that, uh, even I don't watch them, but especially where, um, they're, if they got four stations or five stations that they don't watch, I agree with Mr. O'Reilly, they should be able to choose either the History Channel or Turner, uh, Classics or whatever, and that's my comment. Thank you.
This is a, this is an interesting topic for the committee and advisory board to, to consider. I'd like to ask some questions relating to the pursuit of the senior discount. For instance, if the implementation of a senior discount was, uh, in effect to raise the rates for non-seniors, um, and have it just be a explicit cross subsidy, um, within the town of Wilmington, is that something that, that we should, um, consider and look at, and what is the sense of the members of the audience? Similarly, how should, uh, such a discount be implemented if it were effectively negotiated? I'm interested in knowing what kind of criteria you'd like us to implement, um, over sixty years old, over sixty-five, uh, low income, income-based, um, and what service tiers perhaps should it apply to? And having this type of information will help us in our discussions with Comcast to figure out how to, uh, precisely to implement and go after something like this.
Tom, this is our four forty-seven, Middlesex Avenue. You just gave me a thought. Uh, maybe in lieu of a discount for seniors and an increase for non-tenors, you might come up with a senior package that would have less stations, uh, no Nickelodeon, no Disney Channel, with a History Channel, with a, uh, Turner Classic Movie Channel. Smaller bundle, senior package, less money, doesn't affect the, uh, the non-seniors. So that's, that's a thought, to basically cover what you just said. I'm not answering your question.
But, but that, such a package would be open to anyone who wanted it, not, you wouldn't have to affirm that you were a senior citizen in order to sign up for that package, would you?
Whatever, now it gets, yeah, but I mean, there's a, an inroad right there, I think, you know, uh, uh, a small, Nickelodeon, like, and Disney, and I can't think of a few others, uh, foreign language channels, maybe a lot of seniors wouldn't need that. So MTV, yeah, good. Anyway, it's a thought, right?
I appreciate that question, uh, and I do agree with the farmer, uh, speaker, that if it's possible to have a package for, uh, the senior, uh, citizens sixty-five and over, that would work well. As long as there was a discount, because you have too many senior citizens that cannot afford the high, high rates, that live on fixed incomes, which is true, and if their taxes have gone up, the oil prices have gone up, and quite a few of them do really enjoy watching the local government, uh, WC, you know, TV, and there are some in this town that do not even have basic. They have the older tenor, they have Channel Four and Five and Seven, and they're shut-ins because they cannot afford even basic TV. So something has to be, you know, addressed. And if other cities and towns, they've already set a precedent, you know, and according to the assistant town manager, that they are gonna try and negotiate some package, but that is a good idea, if you could, you know, compile some package. As long as there's a discount in the, involved, and it's not gonna be, you know, way over their head. Quite a few of them, cable TV, I do know, quite a few, few of them have reduced many, many times, from like eighty dollars to sixty dollars to forty dollars or whatever, because they just don't have the money. And I, I truly believe that cable TV should negotiate with the town of Wilmington for something for the senior citizens in this here town, because recently other towns have received it, and as you well know, the assistant town manager, according to the town council, it hasn't been too long ago that other towns have received a senior citizen discount. You just gotta negotiate it.
I'd just like to lend my support that I think, you know, um, other package selections, such as one geared towards older individuals that doesn't have the younger programming, or possibly even packages geared more towards younger people, new families, so forth, great idea. But if, um, you know, more packages or à la carte is not an option, um, I would suggest that, uh, discounts be based upon income because it's the low-income seniors or the fixed-income seniors that are having the problems, but you don't have to be a senior to be low-income, so if, if truly the problem is that these people can't afford the cable service, then it should be based on the income and not the age category. Thank you.
I, I would just, um, just make one comment with regard to the program bundling, um, just so that, um, people don't have false expectations necessarily. Uh, again, the, the program bundling or the channel options that Comcast provides in terms of its various packages, uh, we can certainly have discussions with Comcast, but in, in terms of, um, you know, insisting on particular changes in program lineup or channel lineup, again, that's, uh, an area where the FCC, um, Federal Communications Commission, through their regulations, um, have deemed that, uh, communities do not have the authority to get into, um, you know, dictating or, or even including in the licenses what channels and bundling will or will not be, um, in there. So I, I, I understand clearly pricing and program selection are probably the two biggest concerns that most people have about cable, uh, but I just need to make people aware that we have to work within the legal constraints that exist with respect to the license renew- to work within the legal constraints that exist with respect to the license renewal. So, you know, we certainly can have discussions, but I don't want to set any false expectations that we can necessarily come back with a license that will identify, you know, a senior package, so to speak, that would include Turner Network or whatever. So, but, you know, certainly, I think it's valuable for people to express their opinions with respect to these concepts, because I think Comcast is, with some frequency, monitoring what people want. Obviously, they do have other competitors, the Dish Networks and so on, so there is a level of importance for them to look at what people are watching. Sure. You're on.
Fran Jack Salem Street, with all due respect to the last speaker, I have to disagree with him because it should be sixty-five and over, and it doesn't make a difference where one senior citizen has a little bit more money than the other senior citizen. That's out and out discrimination. It should be for senior citizens sixty-five and over. Thank you.
I'm still Richard Grinder, and hopefully I won't mess up access and accessible here. The thing is, I understand we are limited in the ability to negotiate. Essentially, I think Comcast would like to give us whatever we want as long as they make a ton of money. And the thing I would be afraid of, I would be very careful, is that we do not lose our community cable capability in the process of bundling for seniors. I'm a senior, obviously. But we know that in the Senate, there are three bills that essentially do great things for Comcast and other companies like that, and do nothing for local access. So we are presently under the gun as far as even having this capability. Now Comcast, right now, in Wilmington, I believe, has monopoly, because I don't think there's anybody else that's supporting the cable television here now. And I realize you have to put into your contract that others can try to come in, but I want to be sure that, whatever the language, that we don't offer other people the ability not to include Wilmington cable television. Because that's really what is coming up, if we would allow it to happen. So try to keep WCTV. And if there's plenty of competition to Comcast, if there are other people that have a billion, several billion dollars, that'll be great. But I don't think you'll find too many. Thank you.
482 Middle Six Seven, not Wilmington? Not too long ago, I'm a senior citizen, as a result, I could not afford those high costs of all channels. So I called them not too long ago, and they had it reduced. I looked simple, the standard or whatever. And they said, oh, just a case of going out to the pole and doing something else there, there wouldn't be any charge. However, I asked the question, what would be necessary, what would be necessary to add them back again? I came up with more money. They said they would charge kinda high. I thought twenty-five, thirty dollars to get hooked up again. What they do up in the pole, doesn't cost anything to disconnect, costs a heck of a lot more to put back on again. Can anybody answer that question?
I don't think we can answer that tonight. That's something that we can ask the representative to look into.
Doesn't cost anything to disconnect up on the pole, but it costs a hell of a lot to put back on again. Okay?
We'll look at that, we'll ask that question of the Comcast representative.
No other questions on that. It's just I could not afford those rates that they were charging, so being a senior, fixed income and all that.
What about with respect to billing? I'd be interested to know whether the billing statements that people receive are easy to understand, are clear. Can people speak to any issues, positive or negative, with respect to their billing and paying and Comcast keeping an accurate account of your charges? Is there any comment there?
Tom, this is 447 Middle Six Seven. I just, I've always had the Comcast television and computer service. I just got a new phone service, which includes long-distance calling in the package. And she can, see if I'm accurate, it's a thirty-nine dollar and change telephone service, if you are already a subscriber to the TV and the computer. With this, you now get one bill rather than separate bills. And they itemize your phone, your television, and your computer. Unless you make 411 information calls, there is no addition to your telephone service. It comes out at thirty-nine, whatever, and they gave me a number for all three services, what it would cost me, including all taxes, and that's what I got on my first bill. So it was accurate, and it was much nicer to receive one bill rather than trying to figure out what you're being charged on three separate bills. So going over it once again, I have now got their digital phone service. I've had some trouble with the phone since then, but they've addressed it every time I call. And the new bill encompasses all three services, the television, the computer, and the, that's the high-speed internet, and the telephone. And it seems to be an improvement, and the bill was just exactly to the penny what they told me it would be. And it was easy to read.
Anybody care to ask me a question? Wayne?
I'd like to ask about the future cable services. And one in particular that comes to mind is the video on demand, where you can push a button on your controller and call up a movie that you might want to see. I understand there's going to be some free content coming up. And one of my reasons for asking is, once people sign up for this and they get in the habit of pushing a button and seeing a free movie, it's pretty easy to push a button and get charged four dollars for something that isn't free. It's a matter of self-discipline, I guess, pretty easy to do. It's a matter of self-discipline, I guess. But especially in the case of people that are on fixed incomes, do you think this could possibly be a problem for anybody who might sign up for the initial free service and the free movies and then kind of get a little bit in the hole, kind of like sometimes people do with the credit cards, where they charge things and then the bill comes in a month later and it's a lot more than they anticipated?
Fran Jack Salem Street, Wilmington. Video on demand, that's what you're saying, okay? And it'll cost the customer maybe four dollars, four dollars and fifty cents, three twenty-five, or whatever. And if there is no control on it, I could certainly see a lot of people pressing the wrong button or whatever. If there is some control on it, you know, that may be a little, you know, different. But even your videos, you have a lot of free videos on demand, because I have digital and I do have that there, but a lot of those movies you wouldn't watch anyways. And you can go to the video store on a Tuesday, a Wednesday, or a Thursday, and you can get five of them for less than three, four dollars. So the amount of money that they're charging pay, pay TV for the movies, et cetera, it's a little bit too much. I know there were quite a few people that would do it, especially teenagers, in the younger generation or whatever, but they don't, most of those movies I wouldn't watch anyways. But it would be costly, I think, a little bit too costly. Unless you have a complete shut-in, you know, I mean, I think it would be too expensive for any senior citizen to have something like that, most definitely. I mean, I have a good program and I enjoy Comcast, never had any problems with them whatsoever as far as service or whatever, but still, I think it costs a little bit too much money. And we're definitely for senior citizens. Thank you.
Do people, thank you. Do people see having access to the free on-demand movies for no additional charge, I guess? Is that correct at this point? Okay, all right. I'm under the assumption, I might be wrong, that at least initially, some of these movies are going to be free, no additional charge, and no charge to get this set up. What that, I'm sorry? Free. Right, right. My concern was with getting in the habit, you know, once the system's in place, then being able to push a button, not by mistake, but by will, to order a movie for whatever it's going to be, could be a surprise to some people at the end of a month, how much they've rented. When you go to a video store or the library, you know, you have to get in the car or walk, and you're very conscious about what you're doing. Kind of controls how much you spend, in a way. But, Dick?
I think back to the old thing, there is no such thing as a free lunch. There is no such thing as a free video. I'm sure the cost has already been included in the bill. And the idea that you will have access to something for free, I think, may be a good advertising method, but it does kind of, it lets you see the free ones, and then you say, well, maybe, maybe there's something better on there, and it's so easy to do. So just the idea that free is not, no lunches, no videos.
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment on, about pressing the button and all of a sudden you have a charge of three fifty or four fifty. It would seem in this, with the technology that Comcast has, I mean, if you didn't pay your bill, you are watching TV one moment, and the next thing you know, you have a blue screen, that's them flipping a switch. You call up and you pay your bill, they flip a switch and you're back on. If a person pressed for an on-demand movie, it would seem that Comcast could give them a prompt on the TV that by choosing this movie, you will be charged X amount of dollars on your next bill. If you're agreeable to that, press okay. They could even go so far as to, after they press okay, it would say again, you realize once again that you are going to be paying four twenty-five for this movie. If they press okay again, they have the movie. That, I mean, if they want it, they can press the button twice, and that would work well for Comcast. I mean, if you pressed the button twice, you must have wanted the movie. How can you say it was a mistake?
I'd be interested to see if anybody has any comments about the marketing that Comcast does. Has anyone ever been contacted by Comcast in the last two or three years, either with respect to surveying your opinion about programs or service, or have you been contacted by a representative from Comcast about a new service that they'd like you to consider? And if so, I'd be interested in hearing about those experiences. Anybody?
Pete Selya from Lawrence Street. I have had several surveys sent to my house, and I've filled out every one of them. They usually come about every three to six months. Things out when the system works right, it works very well. There are some issues that I've had, that I have put comments into, and also have marked on the survey appropriately. And I do, I will admit that none of the negative parts or things that I've seen that need improvement have ever been addressed, so.
Just to follow up, in terms of those surveys, now, the town issues a survey annually. This is, this is not the town survey, this is a survey from Comcast?
Yeah, I believe so. I'm not sure how to differentiate, but I haven't seen where I would differentiate one from the other, but they're all tied to that Comcast survey.
Okay. Any other, yes?
Good evening. I'm Sonia Carlson from the forgotten land of Nod. And this is a great opportunity to get rid of a beautiful Oak TV that I had a cable box on. I hate to throw it out. But anyways, the TV went off, said it was disconnected, so I called, and they were very nice about it and checked things out, and my bill was paid. I have basic service and I find it quite sufficient. I just don't like the foreign channels, hate those. But anyways, they said if it happens again, call again, and I did when it did. And so the next thing, I received a card in the mail that they wanted to make an appointment to change that box, that they had a new box that was, the other was obsolete. They said it wouldn't cost anything, wouldn't add to my bill, and there was no charge for the man to come to the house. I get the next bill and it's double. So I decided I'm not going to keep that beautiful TV. And so I, they were going to charge me to return the box, you know, they wouldn't pick it up. But anyways, I returned it, and my beautiful TV is sitting waiting for somebody to love it, and all they need to do is pay about ten bucks, and they'll have a TV that works fine. So, and I'd like to compliment WCTV on all those public access programs, and I have no complaints, other than that charge that they said wouldn't be a charge, to replace that cable box for this TV that's not cable-ready. have no complaints, other than that charge that they said wouldn't be a charge, to replace that cable box for this, um, TV that's not cable-ready. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments? Well, let me, uh, for the purposes of, uh, providing additional comments here, read the comments that I have received to this point, uh, into the record. I received an email, uh, today from Deborah Cipriani, who is the Recreation Director. Uh, and she indicates, "It is a pleasure dealing with Donna and the staff at WCTV. They are always friendly and eager to help. We send them our quarterly recreation flyers, along with any necessary updates and revisions. This is a great way of reaching residents who don't have anyone in the school system. If programs are canceled or rescheduled, we have them posted, uh, as well. In the past, we have run several youth video camps in association with WCTV. When the Red Sox trophy was coming to Wilmington, we only had a few days to promote it. WCTV assisted by advertising it immediately. WCTV also advertised the events for Wilmington's, for Wilmington's 275th anniversary. They taped and aired the 275th anniversary parade for those unable to attend. Uh, just this past weekend, Jim Buckley and Tom Pizarro taped the Second Annual Breakfast with Santa, and will televise it on Christmas Day. Donna and I have recent, have had recent discussions on advertising after work hours. We are working to find a system so that if basketball had to be canceled on a Saturday, people could just turn on WCTV, uh, and see if the games had been canceled or not. Uh, this would be a very fast and effective way of reaching the parents of nine hundred children in case of inclement weather, or with problems at a specific school. Please pass along my thoughts and appreciation." Uh, we al, I also received an email, uh, from Tom Notala. Uh, he, he writes, "Dear Mr. Hull, my name is Thomas Notala. I am a Wilmington resident and the producer of, quote, 'The Wilmington Workout,' end quote, a weekly exercise program that airs on WCTV Channel Nine. I would like to voice my support and endorsement for the staff and service of the existing WCTV cable operation. Earlier this year, I had an idea for a local program that would encourage the residents of Wilmington to partake in an exercise program and to teach them the finer aspects of resistance training. I actually got the idea from watching another program on WCTV called Cooking on a Matchstick. Uh, I approached the staff at WCTV with my idea and was heartily encouraged to participate in local programming. Via emails and personal contact, I was guided through every step of the process by the helpful staff at WCTV. If I had any questions, they were answered promptly and professionally. I am proud to say that I saw my project through to completion, and my series of nine shows has been airing on WCTV, WCTV for the past several months. I have received many positive comments from fellow Wilmington residents who have seen the program and enjoyed the content. None of this would have been possible without the access to local programming and the knowledgeable staff at WCTV. I would like to see WCTV supported and funded so they, so that they may continue to provide a forum for Wilmington residents to reach out to the wonderful community that we live in. Thank you very much. Thomas Notala, twelve, uh, Heather Drive, Wilmington." Another, um, email. Uh, this was, uh, from Robert Malewski. Uh, "I am Bob Malewski, sixteen, Heather Drive, Wilmington. Uh, here are my comments concerning cable service in Wilmington. My biggest concern is the cost of cable service in Wilmington. I believe that having one cable provider is not the, in the customer's best interest. I recommend that you consider allowing competing firms to do business in Wilmington. Don't let Comcast make you believe that Verizon DSL is a competitor. Verizon DSL is not available in large areas of Wilmington. Comcast also does not make any effort to inform their customers about, uh, ways to reduce their cable bills by combining other services, uh, phone, internet, cable TV. They seem to make offers to customers who may have minimal cable service, but not to customers that have large cable TV and internet bills. Seems they want to expand, but not help those, uh, who are already paying a great deal, keep the price of all their combined services down. I recently helped someone, uh, who has basic cable evaluate a promotional offer for a cable TV, internet, and phone service from Comcast, that she received from Comcast in the mail. Interestingly, I did not receive the same offer. Perhaps it is because it isn't in the best interest of Comcast to provide me with a promotional offer that could reduce the price I am paying for their service. Good business sends yes, good neighbor sends no. Comcast is not our good neighbor, let's not treat it as if it is. Let's make them fight for our business with the other service providers. If they don't do a good job in keeping the cost down, then the business will flow elsewhere. Comcast is basically a monopoly, and allowing that to continue over a long period of time does not keep the price of cable service down. Further, Comcast does not allow for a à la carte, uh, cable service. You must buy packages. I am not interested in MTV or other music video channels, yet I must have, have them because they are part of the packages. The same goes for other channels in a package. When I originally got cable internet service, uh, I was told that the rental price for a cable modem was ten dollars per month, yet when I bought my own modem and returned the rental, I was told that the rental price had fallen to three dollars per month. Yet during the same period, cable internet service price continued to rise. The way I look at it, the cable companies Comcast and its predecessors hit a seven-dollar-per-month price increase by very quietly reducing the rental cost of modems, while at the same time increasing the cost of service. Concerning local cable TV, I am not sure higher costs for cable services are justified to pay for local access. When I tune into local access, I frequently see someone putting on their own version of MTV or some other interesting but not very cost-effective program. Uh, local government meetings seem to be a logical but amateur entertainment program, uh, but amateur entertainment programming seems less critical." Uh, Bob Malowski. This, um, uh, email was received from Harry L. C. "Dear Jeff, I am a member and current president of the Tuxbury Wilmington Lodge of Elks, uh, 2071, which is located at 777 South Street, Tuxbury, Mass. I have been a member of the Lodge for nine years. I have been involved, uh, serving the communities for, uh, for Tuxbury, Wilmington for all nine years that I have been in the Elks. Many of the citizens of Wilmington would not have, uh, would not hear, have, have heard about the community service that the Elks supplies without the help of Wilmington Cable Television. WCTV has an annual fraternal organization evening for the many organizations to speak about their benevolence in the community. This helps the citizens of the community understand everything that the Elks can do for them. In closing, the eight hundred and fifty members of the Tuxbury Wilmington Lodge of Elks 2070 are gratefully, are grateful for the service that WCTV supplies. I want to stress the fact that since this service is free, we can continue to support both Tuxbury and Wilmington communities. Uh, we at the Elks fully support the continuing need for WCTV service to the community. Sincerely, Harry L. C." Uh, this letter is, uh, from Jennifer Fiedler. "Dear Mr. Hull, I am a teacher at Wilmington High School and am writing on behalf of WCTV. As the digital video teacher at Wilmington High School, I have had the pleasure of working with WCTV over the last three years. In the past, uh, students have had the opportunity to use the WCTV studio space for a variety of projects, both for my class as well as other subjects. Whether acting in front of a blue screen or learning how to use the equipment behind the scenes, my students have enjoyed the chance to work in television production studio, an experience which has truly enriched the digital video curriculum. While certainly an entertaining and exciting way to spend a class period or two, the chance to work with studio equipment and blue screen, in a blue screen, is an excellent educational opportunity, uh, that most high school students may never have. Armed with the knowledge of how to film and edit video footage along with a, a resource like WCTV, Wilmington students can supplement a variety of course assignments with visual and video projects. Being able to explore television production at WCTV also introduces students to career fields they may not have previously considered. I strongly urge you to continue funding WCTV. Without adequate funding, WCTV would not be able to provide the resources it currently affords to Wilmington students. While members, membership fee obviously helps with the cost of these services, uh, a cut in funding would most likely lead to WCTV increasing these charges, something that high school and many students might not be able to afford. Please continue to support this truly valuable resource. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Jennifer Fiedler, Wilmington High School Digital Video Teacher." Uh, and this, uh, email is from Louis Connolly, Tuxbury Wilmington Lodge, Elks 2070. "Dear Jeff, I am a member of the Tuxbury Wilmington Lodge of Elks 2070, which is located at 777 South Street, Tuxbury, Mass. I have been a member of the Lodge for approximately thirty-four years. Uh, in many capacities, in the, in the serving on committees in my Lodge, to mention a few, Americanism, drug awareness, scholarship, bingo committees, the support of the Wilmington Cable Television has been there for us, uh, to inform the local community of our events. They have an annual fraternal organization evening for many organizations to speak about their benevolence in the community. In closing, the members of the Tuxbury Wilmington Lodge of the Elks 2070 are very grateful for this service that is, and I want to stress the fact that this service is free, so we, eight hundred and fifty members from both communities, Tuxbury and Wilmington, support the continuing need for WCTV services to the community. Sincerely, Louis Connolly, Tuxbury Wilmington Lodge of Elks 2070." And then, the last, um, piece of correspondence, which I received some time ago, uh, is a petition, um, uh, for a senior discount. Uh, this was presented to me by Francis Deck. Um, there are three hundred signatures to this petition. Uh, it is to the Town of Wilmington Board of Select Persons Assistant Town Manager Jeffrey Hull, re-senior citizens' discount for Comcast Cable TV. We, the undersigned residents slash senior citizens of the Town of Wilmington, wish to express our interest in receiving a senior citizens' discount from Comcast Cable TV." Uh, those are all the written comments, uh, that we have received to this point. Um, I guess, at this point, unless members of the task force have particular questions that you would like to, uh, ask, I would open it up for any general comments that people may have concerning, uh, either past performance of cable, what you'd like to see in the future, uh, WCTV, any, anything that you may have with regard to cable service. Sonia?
I'm Carlson from the Forgotten Land of Nod, 404 Andover Street in North Wilmington. Um, I had called several times regarding the, uh, audio on the selectance meetings. I love watching those meetings if I can't come to a meeting, but somehow or other, occasionally, it's very hard to hear. And I thought that would be something to check on, so I, I called three times on that. Thank you.
We will, uh, check on that. Okay, just, um, this gentleman first?
Pete Sylvia from Lawrence Street. Um, just general performance, uh, comments I have are, uh, when, like I said, when things work right, they work very well, so I'm typically pretty pleased with them. Um, a continuing comment that I've had and tried to put forward is the difference in volume between the, the programming and the commercials is, is something I think people have commented on before, but doesn't seem like anybody, um, addressing that. It's, you, you constantly have to keep, uh, the cable volume control in your hand, uh, if you're watching anything. Uh, also, uh, some of the issues, um, previously, I know there was a hang-up with, um, the channel, when you were changing channels, the cable boxes would lock up. It appears that those have been resolved, so, so that's good. Uh, I still get some of, um, the pixelation that I think one gentleman, um, mentioned before, that seems to happen, um, um, on a periodic, but when it does happen, it's, it's there for, um, probably an hour or so during the time, so, uh, it comes and goes in spots, and, uh, so, uh, some of the channels, they'll freeze out, but that doesn't happen as, as much as it is used to, so there seems to be some improvement in that area. And that's about it. Thank you.
Larry just said again, four eighty-two, Middlesex Avenue, North Wilmington. I must be a little confused here. It appears as though, listening to everybody's comment here, they were not too happy or satisfied with what Comcast has to offer. However, this group does an excellent job. They comment on how good they've been doing. What happens if this competitor takes over? Does that equipment go back? That's a question. That, does that equipment go if Comcast goes?
The... Wilmington Cable TV, um, is, uh, receives, um, a significant amount of their funding from an access fee that Comcast pays on a quarterly basis. Uh, that's part of the license that they operate under. Um, that, that type of provision would exist whether it was Comcast or any other cable provider.
Comcast is worried in such a way that the other provider would leave the equipment and provide the support? Is that what you're saying?
The ca, the, the equipment, I think, if I understand the question correctly, that the equipment is actually owned by WCTV. Um, the source or significant source of their money comes through this, uh, five percent access fee that, uh, that Comcast pays out to WCTV on a quarterly basis. Um, and it would remain the same, but we'd certainly strive to keep it the same if there was another provider that came into the picture.
Fine. Let's not use it. Let's, let, let's not use, lose it, okay?
Andrew Carton, two ninety-three Salem Street. Um, I'd just like to reiterate what, um, the fellow said about the sound. Uh, it's very annoying if you have, you're listening to a program and then the ads come on, and the volume goes up, not twice again, but really to a point of annoyance, and in your mind, you think, ooh, that's on Comcast, can't they adjust that sound? I've, I've mentioned this at the last time that we had a meeting like this, so that would have been four years ago, and nothing, nothing ever changed. People all agreed that the sound was, was, um, very loud during the ads, and that you did have to keep your volume control with you at all times. And that was, that was a complaint that everybody had, but nothing changed over the, however many years it was since the last time we had dealings with, uh, the contract. So, um, I don't know, it'd be nice if they heard it. I'm actually, heard what we had to say. I'm actually wondering, does Comcast have a contract with the advertisers to say that they will bump, that, that the volume will be bumped up during their ads? And that they have signed some contract with the people that they, um, have the ads with? So I'm not sure if it's Comcast or the contract they have with the people who, whose ads they're doing.
I can tell you from my own personal experience, I have Dish Network for, for my movies, and I have the same problem with the audio, uh, versus, uh, the commercials versus the show. So what you're experiencing, I don't think is unique to Comcast. It must be something to do with the, the people who supply the programming that feeds into Comcast or Dish Network or whoever, and they're the ones that are bumping the volume up on the commercials, and, uh, I think the suppliers are stuck with that problem. I don't know technically what they have to do to, to correct it, but it's not unique to Comcast. I get it on Dish Network, too.
If you have, if you have it happening from another source, it says to me that the advertisers, that's part of the deal that they have, that we, you know, we want, we, we'll give you all this money to, to spend, we'll spend all this money on our advertisers. we, we'll give you all this money to, to spend, we'll spend all this money on our advertising, but you have to bump up the volume.
I don't, I don't think Comcast or Dish Networks bump up the volume. I think what comes into their system, they, they pull it off of a satellite or whatever, but whatever programming they buy already has that in it, and they must have to do something to try to eliminate the problem. They don't think they create it.
I wonder if they realize how annoying it is, because it really, the additional volume doesn't do anything. It certainly doesn't sell me the product. It makes me more annoyed.
I tend to use the mute button.
Yeah, yeah, you turn them off, or you leave the room, or whatever. Thank you.
Are there any other general comments about the service, the cable service? Any, any member of the task force wish to offer any comments or pose any questions? Okay, then if not, at this point, what I would like to do is to entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing portion of this ascertainment hearing, with the stipulation that the formal period for interested parties to submit written comments will close at the end of business on Monday, December nineteenth, two thousand and five. Do I have a motion?
I think the motion.
Someone on the committee will second it.
Someone, someone on the committee will second it, thanks. Second? Louise motioned, Wayne seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So moved. Thank you very much for attending this evening.